All set? Good evening and welcome to the December 12th, 2024. County Lake Luzerne's zoning board of appeals meeting, would you all please rise and recite the political allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, preservative, and justice strong.
On this evening's agenda, we have two public hearings. Two zero two four A V dash eleven for Howard Schaefer, Howard and Wendy Schaefer, eight North Drive. The public hearing for two zero two four A V dash twelve for David and Suzanne Sodergrin, twelve North Avenue. And we have two new applications, two zero two four A V dash thirteen for eighteen Camp Tech Road.
Oh.
Zero two four A V dash fourteen for one thirty-three Lake Avenue minutes and new and old business and under new and old business, I'll start that off first because I've been told I have been negligent in formally introducing our new deputy zoning enforcement officer Tucker Columns. That being done.
Roll call?
Please.
Chairman Matthew Pallett?
Yes.
Ray Alzubal?
Yes.
Michael Woodrow?
Yes.
Burgess Ovitt?
Yes.
Kayla Drill?
Yes.
And Sonya Nivisaps.
With that, I would like to start a discussion for public hearing for two zero two four A V dash one. Applicant is known engineering for owners Wendy and Howard Schaefer, eight North Avenue. Schaefer's want to do a boundary line adjustment with their neighbors David and Suzanne Sodergrin, both lots are non-conforming existing lots. They've been both been told that they before the planning board can entertain their boundary line adjustment. They must obtain an area variance to legalize the lot as a non-conforming lot. Karen, has the public notice been published?
Yes, public hearing was published December third, twenty twenty-four, sent to all the adjoining properties within five hundred feet.
Thank you.
It's the same for the Soddergrin one when we get there, but yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, with that, I would like to open the public hearing for area variance two zero two four A V dash eleven. No one engineering for Wendy and Howard Schaefer, eight North Avenue. Karen, have we received any letters?
I received no letters. I had one gentleman in the office who looked over the file. He was the neighbor to the south of the Soddergrins. He had no comments when he finished looking at it.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience which is wishes to address this request? With that, I will close the public hearing for area variance two zero two four A V dash eleven. And we will get into the discussion of requests for area variance two zero two four A V dash eleven. This is seeker exempt, county planning referral is not required. We have a APA non-jurisdictional letter in the file. And I would like to request that that you're you would approach the podium, please. Like to go through the description of proposed action, go through the variance questions. Before we do that, I would just like to do go through as a reminder what we're looking at. For area variance criteria and standards, zoning board of appeal shall have the power upon an appeal from a decision or determination of an administrative official charged with the enforcement of this code to grant area variances from the area or dimensional requirements of this code. In making a determination, the zoning board of appeal shall take into consideration the benefit to the applicant if the variance is granted as weighed against any detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such grant. In making such determination, the board shall also consider the following tests. Not all five tests are required, but met, and we will be discussing all those those five tests, and I know you all know there's five tests, so. Description of the proposed action. Uh, it is the intention of the property owner Howard Wendy Schaefer to proceed with a boundary line adjustment with the neighboring property in the south lot number eight North Avenue. Tax map number two nine eight point one six dash one dash seven seven. This boundary line adjustment through an application of minor subdivision has been previously applied for with the town of Lake Luzerne by the property owner, at which time the property owner was made aware that before this application could be reviewed by the town and area variance needed to be required for both lots involving the boundary line adjustment to become recognized as legal non-conforming lots in order to move forward with that process. This application for an area variance is being applied for to achieve this status in order to then move forward with that minor subdivision application and review process by the planning board of the town of Lake Luzerne. It is our understanding that the current established minimum lot size for single-family residential property is twenty thousand square feet. The owner's property lot size is currently sixteen thousand three hundred and thirty-four square feet. After the requested property transfer of property per the boundary line adjustment with the neighbor property, the resulting acreage will remain approximately the same sixteen thousand three hundred and thirty-four square feet and therefore will not satisfy this minimum lot requirement. The areas owner is requesting this area variance be reviewed, considered, and approved to satisfy this requirement to move forward with the intended boundary line adjustment. Please see the application for the area for this area variance request. So, does anyone have any questions about what the proposed action is? Okay. Question number one. Describe how the requested variance will not alter the character of the larger neighborhood or impact adjacent properties. Response is we do not believe this requested variance will alter the character of the larger neighborhood or impact on the adjacent properties, except for that the property involved in the intended boundary line adjustment. However, as part of the boundary line adjustment, there will be an equal amount of square footage transfer between the two property lots. Therefore, there will be no gain or loss of property by either owner or owner slash lot. This request does not alter the overall size of either lot, but only adjusts the property line location on the south boundary of the lot. I do not, I've been to the the job site. I have seen the remnants of the creep of the building that was on this on this the site. I do not believe that this requested variance will alter the character of the neighborhood or impact adjacent properties. Ray?
I don't believe that this variance will alter the larger neighborhood or the area of this. But I ask the question of what are the major benefits other than this variance of a lot being a conforming lot? Like what other benefits come with a conform a lot being made from conforming to conforming? Like what other doors does that open up?
You want me to address that? Do you want to address it?
You can start if you want.
Okay. The my understanding is the the entire purpose of this area variance is to allow a lot line adjustment. So that the Schaefer's can build a specific house on that lot which currently will not fit on the property with the required setbacks in the in the with the lot in its current configuration. But the planning board cannot allow a property line adjustment on a non-conforming lot. So if Mr. Schaefer were to build a house that fit on the lot as it currently stands, we would not be having this discussion. It is because he wants to do the boundary line adjustment so they can he has bumps it out on one side and gives him enough room to build a specific structure on his lot. Is that a fair assessment?
Sure, yep.
And the the both lots are currently kind of approved, non-conforming lots because they were pre they're pre-existing.
Existing non-conforming lots. There's there's.
And when we look at the larger neighborhood adjacent properties, are there a lot more?
There are a lot of properties in that area that are non-conforming lots.
Okay.
Okay, the only benefit really that I can see that they're going to gain if this gets, you know, approved is that we will then, the planning board will then be able to do this boundary line adjustment right now. As Matt said, in the subdivision book, a boundary line can only happen if the lots involved end up being conforming lots. So that's what we're trying to do is call these lots conforming lots.
Are the neighboring properties conforming lots or are they?
I haven't looked at them specifically. I mean, Soddergrins, obviously, the one that they're doing the boundary line adjustment where they're trying to is not um.
Because I'm what I'm leading up to is if somebody just wants this, wants their property being made a conforming lot, then everybody else yeah wants it in that area.
But it it gives them no other benefit other than if they want to do a boundary line adjustment somewhere down the road as well. Okay, does that answer your question?
Yeah.
No, I concur with you. It's not gonna alter the character of the larger neighborhood.
Mike?
Yeah, the requested variance will not alter the character of the larger neighborhood or impact the adjacent properties.
Kayla?
I don't see any impacts on the adjacent properties, and I don't think there will be um any change or uh alter to the character.
Thank you. Question number two, describe what alternatives have been explored to achieve a solution other than a variance. The response is due to the current property line lot boundaries, the owner is not able to achieve the solution with another approach. Therefore, an area variance to establish the lot as a legal non-performing lot has been established as the way to move forward to achieve the proposed boundary line adjustment. It should also be noted that this process has been fully discussed and agreed upon with the current neighboring neighboring property owner to the south that will be involved in the intended transfer of real property. Um, I don't see that the owner has looked at a lot of alternatives. The owner has determined that he wants to put a specific structure up on the lot, which does not meet which which cannot meet the current setback requirements. A simpler solution from my perspective would be to put up a building that fit and met the setback requirements. So I don't believe alternatives have been explored. Ray?
I agree with the chairman on that. The alternative would be build a structure that is acceptable for that specific lot. So I do not believe alternative or explore.
Burgess? I concur. I would only add that or in a different location because on the existing lot, there would be room in a different location. They have not explored others or a smaller, smaller structure, different location.
Mike?
Uh, I do not feel that of all alternatives have been explored for the variance.
Kayla?
I agree. I don't think there's any other alternative that have been explored. Can I ask a question? Um, can we take into consideration this anyways, but um the prospective building they want to build, would there be any? I'm trying to remember what I was saying. Would there be any um would they would they meet all the setbacks that's needed? Well, um, on the if they were to get the boundary lines, will all setbacks be met regardless of the building that they're proposing?
Yes, we believe they would be.
We believe, okay. All right. So can we even consider that anyways? Because it feels like it's not there yet.
Not right. I don't believe so, no.
Okay.
It's not for our.
Uh, question number three, explain whether this requested variance is substantial. Response is we do not believe the requested variance is substantial as the resulting square footage size of the lot will not change, but rather only an adjustment of the lot line locations along the south boundary of the property, and it says prefer to the plot plan drawing provided. That may be the case, but the requirement is twenty thousand square feet. This is sixteen thousand three hundred and forty-four square feet. Uh, Mike, I don't want you to have to do the math, about eighteen percent.
Roughly.
Roughly eighteen. I'm still getting something different, man, and then I have a fourteen, three, two, one.
That's the other property. That's the property itself.
That's gonna be worse, okay? Uh. I brought it. You told me to bring it. I brought it. Okay. Is eighteen percent substantial? Yeah, I think eighteen percent substantial. Ray?
I believe the numbers are substantial.
Burgess? Uh, those number differences are substantial, yes.
Mike?
I feel that those numbers are substantial, but the transfer of, you know, the the boundary line adjustment with nobody gaining square footage would be non-substantial.
Kayla?
I agree with Mike. I think that the um boundary line is not substantial, but the um twenty thousand square foot it square footage is eighteen percent is substantial.
Question number four, describe how the requested variance will not have an adverse impact on the physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Response is there are no great elevation changes being requested as part of this area variance request, simply a lot line adjustment. Therefore, we feel there's no real physical or environmental impact with this. Um, I agree, there is no physical or environmental impact with the line with the lot line adjustment. I'm not so sure about the construction that will happen thereafter, but we're not considering that. Ray?
This specific variance there isn't a real adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. But however, I kind of look at it in a way, it's a nice straight property line right there. Property lines always are have the potential to lead to disputes. Clean property lines help everybody in the future. These people live here right now. Eventually, they're gonna move on. Some people are gonna buy a couple pieces of property and the lines are gonna go like this down through there, and in my opinion, for the betterment of the neighborhood. You know, it's it's appeasing the current situation, but it's not gonna help the betterment of the the area.
Burgess?
Well, the the question that it will not affect adversely uh the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood, in my opinion.
Mike?
I feel that the requested variance today will not have an adverse impact on physical or environmental conditions.
Kayla?
I believe there will be no um impact.
Question number five, describe how the requested variance is not a self-created difficulty. The response is the owner is not looking to change the size of their lot, just the shape to the south side. The current size of the lot is below the established minimum required for any single-family residential lot. So the owner is seeking this variance in order to meet to eliminate a self-created difficulty when the building on this property, when building on this property in the future. To meet this requirement, this required lot size minimum twenty thousand square feet is not possible with certain current situation and the adjacent land available. Therefore, we don't feel meeting this minimum is a self-created difficulty. I believe it is a self-created difficulty because they don't really need to have this lot declared approved, non-conforming, because they can already build on the lot. So I would say this is a self-created difficulty. The request for this variance is a self-created difficulty. Ray?
I also believe that this request is a self-created difficulty. It's a one.
Burgess?
It is a self-created difficulty.
Mike?
Yes, this requested variance is a self-created difficulty.
Kayla?
I believe it's a self-created difficulty as most are.
Anyone have any other questions regarding this variance request? Starting to scare me.
Well, I don't know if it's appropriate. I'll get in trouble. Is this a zoning that's happened after this guy already bought this property? Is this something that is like?
No, that's always been Hamlet Residential up in there.
Twenty thousand feet, okay. Thanks a lot.
Where they discovered had been built over the property line by a previous owner and he had it surveyed, so it was in poor condition. He tore it down, never rebuilt, and then the Schaefer's bought it from them with no structure on there.
I don't want I don't know if it was a rule after the fact, you know, I hate to hurt somebody. Thank you.
Residential.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question? Anyone have any questions for the engineer? Who have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve this area.
I'll second that.
All right, roll call vote, motion to approve area variance eleven. Matthew Pallett?
Yes.
Ray Alzubal?
No.
Michael Woodrow?
Yes.
Burgess Ovitt?
No.
Kayla Drill?
Yes.
Three votes yes, two votes no. Motion. Karen?
Karen, you've already stated that the public notice for area variance two zero two four A V dash twelve has been issued.
December third, twenty-four.
I will then open the public hearing for area variance two zero two four A V dash twelve. Applicant Nolan Engineering, owner David and Suzanne Sodergrin. Parcel number two nine eight point one six dash one dash seven seven, Hamlet Residential Zone. Fourteen thousand three hundred and twenty-one square feet, location eight North Avenue. Seeking relief from Article Five dimensional requirements in the Hamlet Residential Zone, twenty thousand square feet is required for single-family dwelling. Owners attempting to do a boundary line adjustment, and because it is a non-conforming lot, we will still be in and will still be a non-conforming lot after the proposed adjustment. The planning board requires they obtain a variance to legalize the not performing size of the lot. As the previous application, this is seeker exempt, referral accounting planning is not required. There's a non-jurisdictional letter from the APA in the file.
Um, I just for the record, I want to make a correction on this cover sheet. Um, no, the the cover sheet is correct for tonight, but last month's cover sheet I had the seeker exempt per six seventeen point five C sixteen. It is actually seventeen, not sixteen that exempts it. So I'm just correcting that on the previous, the November fourteenth cover sheet. It's correct on this one.
Thank you. Description of proposed action. The intention of the property owner David and Suzanne Sodergrin to proceed with the boundary line adjustment with the neighboring property in the north. Lot number twelve, North Avenue, tax map number two nine eight point one six dash one dash seven six. Boundary line adjustments that the through an application minor subdivision has previously been applied for with the town of Lake Luzerne, at which time the property owner has been was made aware that before this application could be viewed with the town and area variance was needed to be granted. Uh, Mary, can I ask a question? Do I need to go through all this since we've just gone through this? Thank you.
Matt, don't forget to close the public hearing at some point, too.
The previous one or this one? Oh, yes, yes, I opened that. No, I touched your time. I did. I didn't close the previous one. I shall close it, not before it's over, though. You have any letters on this, Karen?
No, I have nothing on this one either.
Anyone in the audience wishes to address this area variance request? And then I will close the public hearing for area variance two zero two four A V dash twelve. I think we pretty much understand what the the proposed action is, because it goes hand in hand with the previous request. Part of the previous request, so I would move into the variance questions unless someone has an objection. Describe how the requested variance will not alter the character of the larger neighborhood or impact adjacent properties. Response is we do not believe this requested variance will alter the character of the larger neighborhood or impact on the adjacent properties, except for that of the property involved in the intended boundary line adjustment. However, as part of the boundary line adjustments, there will be an equal amount of square footage transfer between the two property lots. Therefore, there will be no gain and no loss of property by either owner slash lot. This request does not alter the overall size of either lot, but rather only adjusts the property line location by the north boundary of the lot. I do not believe that requested variance will alter the character of the larger neighborhood or impact adjacent properties. Ray?
It seems a little bit, this is asking for a little bit more than the last one, right?
It will be, yes.
This is more than twenty-five percent. I believe that this will alter or affect the character of the larger neighborhood because this would mean anybody with lake property that has at least fourteen thousand three hundred and twenty-one feet of property would be eligible for a conforming lot if they wanted one.
I'm gonna go the same that I concur with Matt doesn't alter the larger characteristics or impact adjacent properties.
Mike?
Um, I feel that the requested variance will not alter the character for of the large neighborhood or impact the adjacent properties.
Kayla?
I feel that it will not alter the character of the neighborhood.
Question number two, describe what alternatives have been explored to achieve a solution other than a variance. Response is due to the current property lot boundaries, the owner is not able to achieve this solution with another approach. Therefore, an area variance to establish this as a legal non-performing lot has been established as the way to move forward to achieve the proposed boundary line adjustment. It should also be noted that this process has been fully discussed and agreed upon with the current neighboring property owner to the north that will be involved in the intended transfer of property. Similar to the previous request, I do not, I have no, I've been provided with no alternatives. Having been explored other than this variance request. Ray?
I'm gonna concur with the chairman. No other alternatives are explored.
Burgess?
Same, no other alternatives have been explored that I've been aware of.
Mike?
I feel that no alternatives have been explored to achieve a solution to this.
to this variance.
Kayla?
I agree, there's no other alternatives been explored.
Question number three, explain whether this requested variance is substantial. We do not believe the requested variance is substantial as a result of the square footers slash size of the lot will not change, rather only an adjustment to the lot line locations along the north side of the property. Refer to the plot plan drawing provided. My response to this is the same as the previous application. It is a substantial request, and Mike, I'd like you to do the numbers this time, because I didn't do them.
It's about twenty-six, twenty-seven percent?
Yeah. Twenty-six percent substantial as far as I'm concerned. Rail?
I believe it is substantial for the numbers, and it is not only the lot line locations that are changing, is the actual classification of that piece of property that's changing. It's now becoming a non-performing lot. So it's not, the lot lines are what you see change on paper, but the classification of that lot changes, so it was substantial.
Burgess?
It's very substantial.
Mike?
The percent wise for the non-conforming lot is substantial, but the switch of the property lines and keeping the same square footage is not substantial.
Kayla?
I agree with Mike again, the square footage is substantial, but the lot lines are not.
Question number four, describe how the requested variance will not have an adverse impact on the physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Response is there are no great elevation changes being requested as part of this area variance request. Simply a lot line adjustment, therefore, we feel there's no real physical or environmental impact associated with this. I agree with the response that requested variance for this lot will not have an adverse impact on physical and environmental conditions to the neighborhood. Rail?
This specific variance.
I concur with both, no adverse effect.
Mike?
Yes, the requested variance will not have an adverse impact on physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood.
Kayla?
I agree, no adverse effect.
Question number five, describe the requested variance is not self-created. The owner is not looking to change the size of the lot, it's just the shape to the north side, the current size of the lot is below the established minimum required for any single-family residential lot. To meet this required lot minimums, size minimum twenty thousand square feet is not possible with the current situation and adjacent land available. Therefore, we don't feel meeting this minimum is a self-created difficulty. I disagree with that, I believe it is entirely a self-created difficulty. Rail?
I believe it's self-created.
Burgess?
Self-created difficulty.
Mike?
This is a self-created difficulty.
Kayla?
Definitely self-created difficulty.
Any further discussion?
I'm looking at the variances, twenty thousand square feet to sixteen or fourteen, I'm not looking at lot lines. Am I doing this wrong? No, the variance is twenty thousand square feet, I don't care where he puts his lot line, and they're asking to go to sixteen, which is approved at fourteen, thank you.
If there is no further discussion, I will make a motion to approve area variance two zero two four A V dash twelve, applicant Nolan Engineering. For owner David and Suzanne Sodergren, parcel number two nine eight point one six dash one dash seven seven.
I'll second that variant, I'll second that motion.
Tucker?
Roll call vote to approve A V dash twelve? Matthew Pallett?
Yes.
Rail Zubel?
No.
Michael Burdo?
Yes.
Burgess Ovitt?
No.
Kayla Drell?
Yes.
That's three votes yes, two votes no, A V dash twelve is carrying.
For sure.
Thank you. You didn't have to stay all night this time.
That's right.
Next item on the agenda is area variance, a new application, area variance two zero two four A V dash thirteen, applicant James Moller. Owner Elton Kurt Takowski. Parcel number two nine eight point one six dash three dash three five. Hamilton Residential Zone, point five two acres, location Camp Tech Road. Height variance requested, applicant is proposing a building. To build an accessory structure that exceeds the eighteen foot height limit, the front of the structure is less than sixteen feet, however, due to the slope of the land, the back of the structure is twenty-five feet. Twenty-five feet, seven and fifteen sixteenths inches. Are you sure about that?
The calculator.
It, 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 it's, it's not like, it's, it's not like seventeen thirty seconds. Okay. Mr. Moller, welcome.
Thank you. Good to be back, so I am the acting agent for the Takowskis as per their authorization.
Anyone have any questions on page one of the application?
No.
Everyone understands the history of the property. It's been occupied, occupied by the current owner since seven, nineteen ninety-seven, building from a residence in sixty-five. Seeking a height variance due to the steep drop off of the terrain in the rear of the structure. Twenty-five feet, seven and fifteen sixteenths inches. I've been to the location, that is a pretty severe drop.
Yes, yes, it certainly is. That's what makes it so challenging, and that's why I'm here for this.
Has everyone had a chance to review the application?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Does anyone have any questions?
No.
On the application? Anyone have any questions for Mr. Moller? Motion to accept it as complete.
Accept it as complete.
Yes. Well, since, since I screw that up all the time.
I'll second that.
All right, roll call vote to accept the application is complete, Matthew Pallett?
Yes.
Rail Zubel?
Michael Burdo? Yes.
Burgess Ovitt?
Yes.
Kayla Drell?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Make a motion to establish a public hearing for area variance two zero two four A V dash thirteen on January ninth at seven P M.
I'll second.
Mike? All right, roll call vote to set the public hearing, A V dash thirteen for January ninth at seven P M. Matthew Pallett?
Yes.
Rail Zubel?
Yes.
Michael Burdo?
Yes.
Burgess Ovitt?
Yes.
Kayla Drell?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Does it make a difference, you already have one scheduled at seven o'clock at that night, or you just, they just both show up?
Yeah.
I will be here on the ninth, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
See you.
Yeah, the sense one. Laura? Please come up to the podium. Next item on the agenda is new application, area variance two zero two four A V dash fourteen. Applicant Laura Pavelko. Owner Marie E. Berneki. Parcel number two eight six point twelve dash one dash one seven. Location one three eight eight Lake Avenue. Applicant is leasing a log structure on the property years ago, was used as a diner, she's proposing to use the building for a retail furniture store. Property is in the R E Residential Resort Zone, and one acre is required for retail, the property is point five acres and thus needs an area variance. So Laura, tell us what you want to do, in your words.
I want to open a small retail furniture shop, it's I sell things like tables and stepstools and any custom-made furniture that people need of wood, I do, it's all woodwork, and aside from my interest in opening a business, I also have a great interest in preserving some pieces of Luzerne that are historical. So.
A question which really has no impact, is this gonna be manufacturing or strictly retail?
I have a workshop in the building, so yeah, I guess manufacturing.
Thank you.
If you count, yeah, I make the furniture on the site.
Description of proposed action, small retail furniture shop in the small building near the road. Has anyone seen the application?
Yes.
Yes.
Does anyone have any questions for Laura?
Just to clarify, this is the old nutty pine, it's not the log cabin next to it.
No, it's the old nutty pine.
It's old nutty pine.
Any further discussion?
No.
Make a motion.
Yeah.
Make a motion to accept the application for area variance two zero two four A V dash fourteen as complete.
I'll second that.
All right, roll call vote to accept A V dash fourteen as complete. Matthew Pallett?
Yes.
Rail Zubel?
Yes.
Michael Burdo?
Yes.
Burgess Ovitt?
Yes.
Kayla Drell?
Yes.
Motion carrying.
Make a motion to establish a public hearing for area variance two zero two four A V dash fourteen on January ninth at seven o'clock, so now we're gonna have three seven o'clock. You're gonna have three seven. Fair enough.
I'll second.
Mike?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carried.
See you next month.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is minutes. Has everyone seen the minutes?
Yeah.
Yes.
Does anyone have any questions other than, how could this be twelve pages long?
No.
We know, we know the answer to that question. Motion to accept the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Who seconded that?
Rail.
Rail.
New business, old business, I don't have any old business, well, I did, but I already took care of that, I introduced Tucker.
Thanks.
Just that we have a couple of variances still hanging out there, as Mary just brought up to me, one is the Terlag, Terlag, Terlaga up on Fenway, but he asked to put it off until spring and he may not even do the project, he's taking time to decide. And the other one is Moraglia up on Valeria Drive area, and he is still, I, last I knew, he's still trying to work with APA to come up with some solution as to what to do there. And right now that, his application with them is not even complete, so I don't know where that stands. The two that I have left.
Right.
Being idle at this point.
Based on our the information we gleaned for the attendance at the Warren County presentation, Warren County Office Building by the APA. I don't see that the APA is going anywhere with Mr. Moralia's application. But.
They have to go through the process.
Right. So I understand that stays open. Maybe we should contact Mr. Terlaga and ask him if he intends to do anything with this.
Terlaga or Moraglia?
Terlaga is the one on Fenway, right? Terlaga.
Okay, we gave him until March.
That's right.
So.
I guess we wait till March then.
That's all I have.
Anybody else? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.